He's an idiot.
Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice that this meeting was given on December thirty first, two thousand twenty-one. and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Thursday, January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M The meeting will convene at six thirty P M and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Coming Street. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of Colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Northwest High School's J R O T C.
Harry, go ahead. Forward, march. Color, up. Center, face. Up. The color. Free day, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire, march. Up, up, face. Forward, march.
Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the O P S vision and mission statement.
Both of which can be found at the top of the agenda. The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. The mission, to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez. Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow. Tealyn.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. For the record, I have not heard from Mr. Snow. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Snow? Okay, moving on. Now we have a Treasury report from Mr. Scott Roberts.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Logan. The financial statements for the period ended October thir- periods ended October thirty-first and November thirtieth have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you very much. Dr. Logan?
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, those here in attendance and those watching the stream. I'll begin by saying how excited we are to welcome our students back in person the day after tomorrow, Wednesday, January fifth. We hope our staff and families enjoy time with loved ones over winter recess to relax and recharge. We know this has been a long and challenging school year, but our work is so important. Our young people have persevered just as our staff and families have, thanks to everyone for their continued commitment in January and beyond. Health and safety remain paramount in our second semester. As we shared in December, we'll return with face coverings required for students, staff, and visitors to our schools. Enhanced disinfecting procedures will continue, as will contact tracing and communication with staff and families if someone is contagious while on school campus. In two thousand twenty-one, our district hosts one hundred and our district hosted one hundred and forty-seven COVID-nineteen vaccines vaccine clinics in partnership with the Douglas County Health Department. Thank you to everyone who organized, hosted, and attended one of them. There are more scheduled for two thousand twenty-two, and we encourage everyone eligible for a vaccine to get one, including a booster dose. We are in contact with our partners at the Health Department, U N M C, and Children's Hospital, and we are always monitoring health conditions in our community. If students are experiencing symptoms of COVID-nineteen, the Health Department has a comprehensive list of testing available. Our partners in One World and Charles Drew are also resources. We are working to stand up additional testing resources, and we'll share more about it if, if, as things move forward. Our middle and high school open houses start soon. Omaha Public Schools provides many different options for our students, and these visits give families an in-depth look at our unique school communities. This, along with our high school showcase and other outreach, is part of our work to help families select the school that's right for them, whether it is their neighborhood school or another in our district community. Visit our website calendar for a look at the complete schedule. A reminder, with four new schools opening in August two thousand twenty-two, our updated boundaries and student assignment plan will take effect. We've been communicating proactively with impacted families since the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Last, on a personal note, I'd like to congratulate Alec Cook, senior at Burke High School. Alec is a remarkable young man, and he received nomination from his congressperson to all five service academies today. That is truly, we can give him a clap in absentia. Alec presented at one of our presentations for our academies and pathways. He is an impressive young man, and he knows which one to choose in my home state. So I'm looking forward to hopefully cheering him on at the Naval Academy and Navy football, go Navy. So congratulations to Alec Cook, really, truly a remarkable young man, and represents the finest of the Omaha Public Schools. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Colleagues, Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. I'll be quick. I just hope everybody had a great, great holiday break, got a nice rest, rejuvenated, is ready to come back and take on the second semester and have a, have a great end to the school year. And just another update, kindergarten roundup is coming up, so anybody with incoming kindergarteners, please remember you can start enrolling them tomorrow, I believe, right, Dr. Logan?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yep, yeah, you can start, start reaching out to your schools this week and enrolling your kids. I know our incoming kindergartner is extremely excited for, for that process.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Ms. Erdnberger.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that one of the first things we're doing on the consent agenda is to accept the certificate of substantial completion for the Forest Station Elementary School. This is one of the schools that we will be opening next fall, and we're all very excited about it. If any of you visit the website for O P S, you can see that there is a presentation on today's agenda on an information item, which is a PowerPoint of the, the bond program update. And there's a fascinating chart in there, if you like charts, that shows for each of our schools and all of the updates that we're doing, where we are progressing, and it's really impressive how many things we have in the air at one time, and they're all coming to fruition on schedule. So we're super excited about the certificate of completion for one school today, and we look forward to accepting more between now and August. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you to all of our staff, all staff and our leadership as well, union and non-union workers, engineers, nutritional services, parents, and especially our teachers. Happy New Year, and just thank you for continuing to hold up our district and be, be there for our students. So just thank you to all the staff people who are helping us move forward through two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I'll just, oh, Ms. Cracky?
I know the staff is all instrumental in helping us succeed, but I want to include parents, foster parents, everybody at home there, to be sure you get people up, get them out the door, and participate in these conferences that are coming up, and stay tuned in. So we really admire what you can do for us and what a change we can make if we get our parents on board all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cracky, and I concur with my colleagues. Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year, and we hope and wish you all a successful and tremendous second semester. Moving on now to public comment. Masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you are not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. We have two speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted Policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you do not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. The following individuals have requested that the board waive the requirement that they state their address at the podium for security reasons. The person's name for tonight is Michaela Kazer. I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement that those named individuals state their address at the podium. Is there a motion and a second?
Point of order, Dr. Holman. How are we to assess this? Is there information that we can use to assess any security threat?
I believe the reason why Mrs., Ms. Kazer is requesting security is because she is a student, a college student.
I see.
Yes.
If she's a student, I'd make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Mr. Head and second it by Mr. Smith. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Erdnberger?
No.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky? Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Tealyn?
No.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. We ask that all other individuals please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. Those individuals covered by the previous motion need not provide their address. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them from you. It is now six forty-four P M, and our first speaker is Michaela Kazer.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazer. I spell my name M I C H A E L A K A Z O R. Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazer, and I am here tonight to speak about the perverse evil books that I found on the O P S online catalog for their libraries. The Word of God clearly states that children are precious to the, in the side of the Lord, as stated in Psalm one twenty-seven three. Behold, children are a heritage from the Lord. The fruit of the womb is a reward. The books that you make available to our children are absolutely disgusting and evil. To begin, I will begin by listing some of the books that are pushing hatred through the evil critical race theory curriculum. I love all people regardless of what color of skin they are. I have a pastor at my church who is like a second father to me. I have an, I have a leader at my church who is like an aunt to me, and she's African-American. I am on no ways against people of color. The, this being said, the books that I found are absolutely disgusting and divide the people. One of the books is Just Us, An American Conversation by Claudia Rankin. It's the summary that's found on the catalog states this, "At home and in government, contemporary America finds itself driven by a culture war in which aggression and defensiveness alike are on the rise. It is not alone. In such partisan conditions, how can humans best approach one another across our differences? Taking the study of whiteness and white supremacy as a guiding light, the author explores a series of real encounters with friends and strangers, each disrupting the false comfort of spaces where our public-private lives intersect, like the airport, the theater, the dinner party, and the voting booth, and urges us to enter into conversations which could offer only humane pathways through this moment of division." This book is an invitation to discover what it takes to stay in the room together and to breach the silence, guilt, and violence that's, that surrounds whiteness. And then another book is called Class Act by Jerry Craft, and on the catalog it says, "Eighth grader Drew Ellis recognized that he isn't afforded the same opportunities, no matter how hard he works, that his privileged classmates, and privileged, they mean white privilege, at the Rivadella Academy Day School take for granted. And to make matters worse, Drew begins to feel as if his friend, his good friend Liam might be one of those privileged kids, and is finding it hard to not withdraw, even as their mutual friend Jordan tries to keep their groups of friends together." The other books I found concerning C R T is Conversations in Black on Power, Politics, and Leadership, that talk conversations about race, love, and truth, stamped racism, anti-racism, and you. When They Call You a Terrorist, A Story of Black Lives Matter and the Power of Change and the Power to Change the World by Patrice Cuncaurz. I also found books on the library catalog-
Excuse me, Ms. Kazer, would you, am I pulling your mask up over your nose, please? Thank you.
I also found books on the catalog that have to do with gender identity. One book is called It Feels Good to Be Yourself, A Book About Gender Identity by Tree Seth Thorn. Another book is called Introducing Teddy, A Gentle Story About Gender and Friendship by Jess Walton. The description on the catalog is called Introducing Teddy introduces the youngest readers to understanding gender identity and transitioning in an accessible and heartwarming story about being true to yourself and being a good friend. Errol and his Teddy Thomas are best friends who do everything together, whether it's riding a bike, playing in the treehouse, having a tea party, or all of the above. Every day holds something fun to do. One sunny day, Errol finds that Thomas is sad, even though they were playing their favorite games. Errol can't figure out why until Thomas finally tells Errol when, what the Teddy has been afraid to say. "In my heart, I've known that I'm not a girl. I'm a, I mean, in my heart, I've always known that I'm a girl, Teddy, not a boy, Teddy. I wish my name was Tilly, not Thomas." And Errol says, "I don't care if you're a girl, Teddy, or a boy, Teddy. What matters is that you are my friend." So now they're going after the youngest of readers, not just keeping it at the high school level. Other books that I found on the catalog are The Everybody Book, The LGBTQ Inclusive Guide for Kids About Sex, Gender, Bodies, and Families, Jacob's New Dress, Gender Identity Beyond Pronouns and Bathrooms,
One Minute.
She, He, They, Them, Understanding Gender Identity, Coping With Gender Dysphoria, and The Full Spectrum, a new, a new generation of writing about gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender questioning, and other identities. Parents, you need to wake up and see that they are pushing perverse things down your kids' throats, and that they are not trying to hide it anymore. It was very easy to find on the catalog. I was very surprised. And it's not hard to stand up here and speak for righteousness and the Word of God when you know you are right. Because as Romans eight thirty-one says, "If God is for us, who can be against us?" God bless you.
Next, we have Steve Denenberg.
Good evening. My name is Steve Denenberg, S T E V E D E N E N B E R G. I live at six five six North Fifty-Sixth Street. I am begging you to take action to help the high schools. First, a brief story. When the pandemic first hit, I pulled my father out of the nursing home that where he was, and I began a months-long and ultimately futile campaign to get the nursing home to test its employees for the virus. I failed because its Board of Directors was weak, inadequate to the task of protecting its residents, which was its most important task. Are you up to the, your most important task, maintaining the quality of our schools? Our high schools are in trouble. Students have significant behavioral problems. Some are years behind academically. Teachers are understaffed, covering other classes without subs, without planning time, without time for themselves at home. They're exhausted, overwhelmed, stressed, frustrated. Teachers are considering quitting, more than just considering. The N S E A last month heard from over a thousand teachers who planned to leave teaching after this year. O P S teacher resignations were up thirty-three percent over the previous year. The O E A president standing here in this room called it an emergency. The World Herald called Dr. Logan about this. She declined to comment. Her administration people responded with blah, blah, teachers are just advocating for our children. Educational academies will develop a talent pipeline. You kidding me? So here we are. The administration paints a false rosy picture while the teachers and students drown. That's a sure sign that the ship is going down. It now falls on you to take action to help the schools. It's your responsibility. If I were in charge, I would try things. Give teachers their personal lives back and let them teach. Here's a start. Eliminate pathways. The twenty-two million dollar savings would hire new teachers, forty per high school, for the right salary, you'll find them. Give the current teachers matching raises. Regain control of the classrooms. Insist on classroom decorum and move offenders out. Get more mental health professionals into every school. Fill those security officer vacancies. For those in academic trouble, reduce credit requirements and teach low-pressure remedial classes. Removing pathways would also yield more time for basic core classes and allow counselors to design schedules better tailored to each student's needs. You don't have all the answers, so get input from those with boots on the ground. You must overcome the dysfunctional environment that the superintendent created with teachers fearing retaliation if they offer their opinions. Give the principals huge latitude to try new things. Gather past principals to get their guidance. And changes need to be implemented now. That's what emergency means. Teacher Michelle Settlemeyer told you recently, "The district is on the precipice of a disaster. It's not hyperbole, and if this all comes as news to you, then grab your phones and start researching tomorrow." You have such an opportunity. You have the power and the resources to respond with force and make a positive change in the lives of thousands of- and make a positive change in the lives of thousands of students. To not use that opportunity, to be weak like the nursing home board and fail to wield that power would be criminal. How often does a speaker, how often does a public speaker cause you to leap into action? If you don't, I fear what will happen. What will a high school do if twenty-five of its teachers resign in May? You're the board. It's your responsibility. Don't listen to the propaganda from the tack building. Push the superintendent out of the way and grab this situation by the throat. It's past time for action. Thank you so much for your attention.
Moving on to consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Tealyn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Head. Any abstentions?
I have one, Dr. Holman.
Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, I need to abstain from item H, uh, eight. Claim C, please.
Okay, um, motion by Mr. Tealyn, seconded by Mr. Head with an abstention from Ms. Cassidy from items, um, H eight, claims report C. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to action items. Item I one A, first reading of policies, twenty-one twenty, fifty-one oh three, fifty-one oh four, fifty-two oh one, fifty-two oh two, fifty-two oh four, fifty-two oh five, fifty-two oh seven, and sixty-four ten, and we have Mr. Tealyn speaking for us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Uh, so these were all, uh, on as information items at our last board meeting. Uh, since then, they have had some small, uh, changes, mostly technical changes, things like punctuation and capitalization. Um, one, uh, semi-substantive change, I'm just gonna pull it up here. In policy, uh, fifty-two oh seven, um, there was, uh, a little bit of, uh, concern that, that there was some conflict in how it was worded. So, um, it, where it previously said that a student is responsible for completing makeup work on his or her own, his or her own initiative by the due date. Um, and then later it said, uh, that it, you know, that makeup work is due within two weeks. Uh, I'm sorry, two school days for each day absent, uh, up to a maximum of ten school days. And so what we did, just to make sure that it was clear what the policy is, that it's, uh, makeup work is due within two school days for each absent, uh, each day absent, up to a maximum of ten days, uh, we removed that, uh, reference to, um, by the due date in that first clause. Um, again, I, I don't think that's substantive. I think it was just a clarification to make sure that the policy reads as intended. Uh, but that was the, uh, the main substantive change since we, um, since we had it on information item at last meeting. So I, with that, I will certainly entertain any further questions. And, uh, it is an action item, I believe, because it's coming from the committee. It is a committee, uh, motion, so it, uh, I don't believe requires a second, just a vote.
Yep. So if there are no other questions for Mr. Tealyn, um, I'm looking for a motion and we do not need a second.
So moved.
Sorry, to clarify, I think it is, it, because it's a committee item, it doesn't need a motion or a second. It's already, I think we just need a, a vote as to whether to, maybe I'm wrong.
I was told that we need a motion. We needed a motion.
You still need a motion, okay. So moved.
A second, okay.
Yeah.
It's been moved by Mr. Snow. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey. Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Tealyn, for the report. Moving on now to information items, item I two A, Bond Program Update. And tonight we have Mr. Brad Bogonowski. Did I say that correctly? Yes, thank you. And Ms. Boykins, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Dr. Logan, and esteemed board members. My name is Brad Bogonowski, Omaha Public Schools Construction Administrator for the bond. Also in attendance, like you just heard, is Ayanna Boykins. She's the Omaha Public Schools Economic Inclusion and Workforce Development Administrator. We are excited to provide an update of the Phase Two Bond Program to you this evening. During this presentation, we'll update you on the Phase Two Bond, including financials, economic inclusion, and next steps. This slide gives you a one-page overview. You can see our progression through the six years of Phase Two on the timeline. We have completed eleven of the twenty-five school projects with five additional schools substantially complete in the next ninety days, represented by the green area of the pie chart. Roughly fifty-four percent of our project schools are in the midst of the construction phase. Let you take a peek at that for a minute. All right. Financial slide here. We've got, original program budget was just under four hundred and ten million dollars, with interest realized, that figure is now over four hundred and twelve million dollars. That interest is already being reinvested into a couple bond schools. Thank you to the board for already committing a portion of these savings.
Can you slow down a little bit, please? Sorry.
Excuse me?
Can you slow down a little bit with the slides?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Committing a portion of these savings, eight hundred and fifty thousand, to repurposing Morton's Auditorium and additional improvements at Spring Lake. We are proud of over thirty-nine million dollars the bond has committed to Omaha's small and emerging business community. To talk more about that, Ayanna will cover economic inclusion.
Good evening, Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Dr. Logan, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share some bond updates as it relates to economic inclusion. As a district, we wield a great deal of purchasing power. And with each economic inclusion milestone, we press further towards our objective, which is to create equitable opportunities to do business with Omaha Public Schools. Presently, we have invested in our local, small, and emerging businesses through a commitment of thirty-nine point five million dollars. Of this ninety-three point five million dollars, we have already paid nearly twenty-seven point eight million. Through the Omaha Public Schools Economic Inclusion efforts, we are generating economic opportunities by developing relationships with emerging businesses in our local area and investing dollars back into our immediate school communities. We are also cooperatively connecting our students with our bond partners to spark vision into our, the, into future careers while providing purposeful options to network with industry professionals. In January, we introduced a more comprehensive. There we go. Um, in January of last year, we introduced a more, uh, more comprehensive data collection forum to gather information on the progress of student engagement opportunities. We are interested in better understanding the specific activities in which students were participating with bond partners, such as more detailed descriptions, the duration or length, uh, whether subsequent activities will follow, how firms would rate the quality of their activity, and whether or not they would repeat that particular, uh, engagement opportunity. Uh, this chart in, in the center is representative of the collective snapshot of the types of activities held. Oct, on October fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one, the Career Center, uh, held a career fair in which five hundred and twelve students and forty-one businesses participated. The picture on the left, uh, showcases MCL Construction and some of the students. Five bond partners set up booths, shared information about careers within their respective businesses, and talked with students about their coursework and interests. Among those participating firms included MCL Construction, Kenneth Hahn Architects, Hausmann Construction, Ali Pointer-McKetto Architecture, and the Whites Company. Several bond partners noted that, uh, based on the conversations with students held during their career fair, uh, might result in internships and job shadowing opportunities. Um, just to spotlight a particular school, Lewis and Clark students have participated in a number of activities with Verona Construction and Ali Pointer-McKetto Architecture, including a presentation to the, uh, the Voices of Inclusion and Equity Student Gate, uh, Student Organization, where Chandler Sanders from Ali Pointer and a consultant, Megan Walls, from Assistology. The presentation included a, a student discussion about how universal design techniques press architects to consider features beyond the standard ADA codes and designs spaces that are inclusive for all people. Yearbook students took a tour of the mechanic, mechanical room, uh, which is the picture shown on the right, and new building addition with Joe Kramer of Verona. During the tour, they captured footage and conducted a video interview. And then also in June, uh, Lewis and Clark Focus School students worked on a number of activities with Ali Pointer over a two-week period of time where they participated in a forum and held discussion about homelessness. Uh, once they had a better understanding of how people in this community are affected and what types of services are available to help, they also worked in groups collaborat, correct, collaboratively, uh, to design, um, what, model tiny homes for, um, the homeless population. These designs were showcased during a culminating presentation. And last, um, during another session, students created mood boards that reflected qualities and characteristics of leadership to begin brainstorming concepts for the wall in the new addition entrance. Uh, this update provides you with a kind of a snapshot of some of the quality student engagement activities that have taken place, um, over the past year uh, with our bond partners.
Of the fourteen projects remaining, we've highlighted two. Ensuring the comfort and health of our students, the work at Lewis and Clark Middle School saw the installation of new boilers, water heaters, and other major mechanical work. We completed a full library renovation to include lighting, ceiling tiles and grid, flooring, and bookcases, and a new circulation desk. Repurposed and refreshed the, the former administrative area, added two classrooms and office space. The new addition includes thirteen new student classrooms, a new off-street front entrance to the school, and a comprehensive administrative suite. Substantial completion for the forestation was submitted to the board tonight on the consent agenda. This is a brand-new, six-hundred-student pre-K through five elementary school located on the southeast boundary of the district. Key features include main floor kindergarten and pre-K rooms that exit directly to their respective playgrounds, a bright and window-laden media center slash library with an attached technology center. The school includes a, a learning stair that provides an alternate educational environment for our students. A dedicated stage adjacent to the, the gymnasium is also part of the build. Several major short-term items include the Highland School move out of South Roads back to their home location and the Spring Lake move into the freshly vacated swing space so that work can begin at, at their elementary school. The district is conducting pre-scheduled family tours for, for prospective students and parents on January eighth and fifteenth. And the Blackburn alternative renovations and mechanical work will be substantially complete in February. On the long-term side, three more new builds will be substantially complete in March, along with one other renovation project. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share this update. Our team is very excited about the impact the bond is having on our students' educational journey and the district's future. The master schedule is on the bond website. All projects are on schedule and on budget. We've included every school in the appendix attached to the presentation that you have. If you'd like additional information on any specific school, let Mr. Ray know and we can provide it. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here tonight and providing the information. Questions, colleagues? Mr. Snow?
I apologize in advance, my voice for the last four weeks is still trying to decide if who wants to join me. Um, first question is substantial completion. Can you give a definition for that?
Sure.
Is it turning the keys over, or is it?
It means operationally available for our use, for OPS's use.
So the construction company officially turns that over?
Correct.
Okay. I, I assume that, but I wanted to make sure. Um, this isn't in the bond update, but I'm assuming South Roads might need some maintenance to it, right? The facility where the students are coming from, Highland?
Um.
So the.
There are, the students are already at Highland, uh, sorry, the students from Highland have already transitioned back.
Okay.
Um, Highland, it's been open for two years for the students at Highland. Uh, it's now going to transition to Spring Lake students. And Highland students just recently moved back.
Okay. And, um, back to slide five, just simple. The other, did you explain what other was? I'm sorry. In the pie chart?
I, I did not.
Oops, sorry.
So, um, some of the other activities included, um, they had the musical this past summer, um, July, or June thirtieth and July first of this past year, where Hausmann Construction helped to, um, help the students in Benson's, uh, Construction Academy construct the, um, the, the stage as well as dismantle after the, after the production was over. Um, there were a number of presentations that were virtual presentations, um, some of which were, um, held with, uh, South, South High School, also with Buffett Middle School. So there's, there's been a number of, of virtual presentations, obviously. Throughout the, the pandemic, we've had to, to do a number of, of virtual opportunities, but, um, a lot of them were presentations, so.
Understand the pandemic has affected a lot of things. Um, the next question I have is the internships.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, could you elaborate on what type of internships?
Sure. So Hausmann Construction, um, has been, um, a big proponent of, of trying to incorporate, uh, student learning in, um, basically through ACE mentoring. We've done a number of, of cooperative, uh, pieces with, um, students who were receiving credit for, um, their, their internships for, through Hausmann. There's also been some through, um, uh, Ali Pointer-McKetto, uh, Architecture. And they've usually, um, done some through Girls Inc. as well as through North High School. So, um, those have been the, the, the main internships that we've seen come out of, uh, come out of the, the, with our bond partners.
Thank you. Um, and for the public, um, when these organizations bid, it's in their, they submit what they want to do with students, and it's in that process for them to be selected. So they are choosing to do this, which is awesome. Um, to the inclusion program. So you had four hundred and twenty-six submitted. Are we assuming, I'm assuming those individuals that weren't selected out of the one thirty-four didn't meet the requirements? Okay. Um, and obviously, your commitments are ten point two, but actual work is seven. When's the, the cutoff where we just have to keep moving?
Once, uh, completion has, has been, yeah, through, the construction completion has, has, um, basically, uh, complete, it's been completed, then we can, we can start to look at, uh, the end totals.
Okay, so, um, let me rephrase. If you're at, um, let's say Highland and we carved away three percent, when do we say, if no one can meet the specs to do the work, just go ahead and do it? Without getting behind? Does it make sense?
Could you, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So we carved.
Mr. Wakefield is here today.
Uh-oh. I'm in trouble, I'm sorry. I'll take the question back. Happy New Year.
Okay, I'll go speak, yeah. Um, eh, eh, if I understand what you're asking, uh, the commitments are what we plan to spend. But we, but we don't want to count all that spend until it's actually spent because the company may not be able to do the work at some point. Uh, what we do is work with each project, and if a company is unable to do the work, we look at our schedule and other available companies to make sure that that project is done on time.
Understand. That, that helps me a lot. And why have you, Mr. Wakefield? Um, I'm trying to think of the word, the term of, you know, we budget for incidences that happen on these projects.
Contingency?
Tend, yeah. How much, where are we at on that?
So.
You know, with these projects, is a lot, I know a lot of these construction companies are really good at going under budget, and then those funds could potentially go to new projects.
Going back to slide, I believe this is slide three, I'm old. Uh, right now, our contingency or un, uh, or unspent bond funds is just under one million dollars. That would include interest earned. That would include interest earned as well as bond contingency. Now, that number does change as projects wrap up, and each project has a little bit of contingency built in it to handle things like pandemic and supplier cost increase. That will fold back into our bond unspent funds, and that's the money that we come to you and occasionally ask to spend in various other bond projects.
I know in the last bond, I think we had roughly $2.00 million that was saved in that and were able to use for other projects. Do you think it'll probably be around the same, or it's hard to tell during a pandemic?
It is hard to tell, and I'd hate to go on record. I would say that that would be close. Note that we've already spent some contingency on the Morton addition, the Spring Lake upgrades, and also the athletic upgrades at the two new high schools.
Understand. Thank you. And for the public, just to let you know, these funds that are saved, the district, because of the bond, we have to send it back to projects that you voted on. So there are some projects that are lower on the list that we can go back to and be very good stewards of your dollars. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Questions? Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. And I've just got a quick question on SEBs just to follow up on Mr. Snow's questions. So just looking at the numbers here, it looks like roughly 20% of the SEBs that were contacted actually bid, and about 25% of them were awarded bids. Is that kind of online with where we were for the last bond program, or...
That I cannot answer. I can...
Short answer would be yes, Mr. Head. Last bond program, if I remember right, our goal was 10% of our spending be with SEBs.
It was 7%.
Seven, thank you.
I remember that.
Okay.
But we got 10.
And this year, it's 15. We stretch ourselves with our new goal, so we're seeing greater spending than we did last time, but we're still struggling to meet that 15% goal.
Okay. And then do the SEBs that are contacted that don't submit a bid, do we hear anything back from them as far as why they didn't submit a bid? Is it the size of the project, just something that they can't handle, or do we know?
Sometimes we hear back, sometimes we don't. Oftentimes, it's size and scope of project, access to materials, access to labor, and sometimes they're scheduled. They're busy, and they're calendared, can't fit another project down within our timeframe.
And then obviously, there's kind of a fine line to walk. You know, we want to engage SEBs, but at the same time, we don't want to needlessly increase costs for the district. So I guess have there been instances where, you know, a small business hasn't been able to bid, but we've kind of changed the specs and changed the project to something that we could include them on?
I'm not aware of us changing the specs. We have often broken projects up. Instead of bidding out all concrete work on an exterior project, we may bid parking lots and sidewalks separately to give an SEB more opportunities to do that.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, colleagues?
All right.
Mr. Snow?
So with the pandemic and kind of the backlog on things, we, with FFE and everything, we're still able to get stuff in? I mean, I'm 12 weeks out on some stuff I ordered, so...
There's still a long road to go, so I do want to say that. Right now, we are on schedule. We have, Jacobs has done a fabulous job working with our CMRs. Our CMRs have done a fabulous job both in identifying materials early and purchasing materials early so we don't have long waits. Where we have had issues getting materials, we look at alternatives, and as long as the quality fits our needs and it fits within our specs, we would look at an alternative. At this point, we're not seeing, we're seeing delays, but we're not seeing delays that will cause us to delay the substantial completion of any project.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And for the community, CMR is Construction Manager at Risk. I know the district, everybody gets in terms, so thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate the presentation and the information. Moving on to receipt of reports, we have two reports on the agenda this evening. Item J1, Head Start Monthly Board Report, November 2021, and Item J2, Head Start Annual Report to the Public, 2020 to 2021. Moving on to closed session, Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, legal advice, pending litigation, and real estate.
There's a motion on the floor by Vice President Erdenberger to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Warris?
Yes.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Tewin?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, legal advice, pending litigation, and real estate. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 7:19 PM. Colleagues, remember, we're going to remain in this room for a closed session.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 8:11 PM. We will end our meeting with the election of officers. The OPS Board of Education shall first elect its president and then elect its vice president. Any member of the board may self-nominate or be nominated by another board member. Nominating speeches are not permitted. However, nominees shall have up to five minutes to speak following the close of nominations and prior to the distribution of ballots. Nominee speeches shall be in order of nominations. Election of officers of the Board of Education shall be kept by secret ballot. Elections shall require a majority of all members of the board, which is policy 8130 and 9120. We will now begin with nominations for the office of president.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Siobhan Holman.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Ray will pass out voting ballots. After Mr. Ray's tallies, the votes announce. Oh, never mind, I'm not supposed to read that, sorry. So we just wait for you to just pass out ballots now? Are there any other nominations? It appears not. Mr. Ray will now pass out voting ballots.
I'm gonna have to put my old doodle down. Three years old. Three years old. Yep, I'm gonna have to put Salty down. Three years old. Yeah, she's got a neuro congenital.